It's like legitimately.
Amazing.
Amazing.
Yeah.
That sounds about all the pears.
It's uh, it's difficult for me to explain how good it is.
You would be unsure.
And I'm like, alright, you can, you can do anything but pears are still.
That's literally all you're able to, you're allowed to do. Everything else let someone else do for you.
I don't care, honey, I don't care for mad at me.
I'm curious about this pear dessert. I do like pears.
But there's a little cinnamon and sugar in there.
Yeah, probably a little bit.
A little bit of sugar? I'm not even a dessert fan.
Pear is just one of those things you just don't have often or sometimes they'll buy pears, but not very often.
They are more perishable than apple, I think.
Yeah, they do, they do. They go a lot, they go fast.
Yeah, and importantly, we had to cut down our nice pear tree. For the addition, uh, my grandkids are just livid. Cause they would, every time they'd come over, we'd go out and pick a pear. They just love eating those pears right off the tree.
You ever had a apple pear?
No.
Well. They're safe in there, they're crisp.
Weird.
They're really good. Mike said he's got like a visiting thing.
No, he does not. Did he say that? Honestly, that's not what he said earlier.
Let you stay.
Alright, if you're done, please, uh, we'll get the committee to order and we'll start with the pledgeable agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody.
Hey. Same crowd tonight.
We had minutes and, and they're there and they're, uh, they're not extensive, but they were there, that's what we talked about. So, I, uh, do you guys see any, uh, changes that need to be made?
I do not.
I don't either. I'll make a motion if we approve the minutes that are presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Let's then move on to the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, which was presented last month.
Yep, nothing's changed, still the same. Um, but good, looks good for our tax rate. Hopefully people are happy with having a little bit of a lower tax rate.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could discuss everything last month.
Nick had, uh, quite a bit of few, good questions last week. Are you satisfied with the responses on those?
Uh, I think so.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought you were.
Uh, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. Uh, I'm fine with that too. Uh, we do have quorum and we already did a first reading on it and a hearing, so, um, any further discussion, anybody wanna make a motion or anything?
I make a motion and we adopt the twenty, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash five budget as presented.
I'll swing that.
We have a motion and a second on the ordinance resolution number twenty twenty-five, the ordinance and resolution for appropriation of tax rates. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Uh, next item of business is a right-of-way permit application. Um, Mike or Stephanie wanna describe a business, please?
Yeah, so, uh, we maintain all of our right-of-ways and, uh, public right-of-ways and easements. However, we don't have any kind of a permit process. So, whenever someone wants to put in any kind of utility within those easements, they just call us and say, can I do this? Yes or no? And there's no really good record.
Okay.
Where the, anyway, long story short, this will enable us to have a way to review what they wanna do, find out where they wanna put these utilities, make sure that aren't gonna be in conflict with anything that we're gonna have in the future, um, and then have a way to, if they damage something, go back to them and say, you need to fix this.
Okay.
And that's just an idea.
And I, that's why, as I read it as such as well, it's to protect, it just sets out what the obligations are for the, for everybody involved there, so.
And that's just the, that's just a permit.
Yeah.
Uh, we actually do have an ordinance, however, it's very, it's one little paragraph.
Okay.
And every community around us, they have multiple pages in, in ordinance form. And I talked to Mike Harvard about this and he thought perhaps we should probably update that as well.
Okay.
Um, however, we discussed if there should be some sort of permit fee, um, attached to all of this. If so, we'll have to, because of the fee, you'll have to have a reading.
Right.
And then a second reading and adoption. This, we can, we can just approve down and say, hey, this is our permit process. Going forward, if you wanna amend the ordinance, if we want to attach a fee to it, and if so, I can have him put it in the ordinance.
Yeah. I, on this, what, what, while we, since this is being presented as just a, this is just a, uh, uh, just an application.
That's it, yep.
So, it really doesn't involve anything except for us to say, yeah.
Yeah, if you guys are fine with that, then we can go with that. And if, if we want to amend the ordinance to back that up.
Yeah.
Then we would need to do that.
I, I'd suggest we do that and we, there, cause I think we're gonna really have to have a discussion on fees.
And we don't have to have fees.
No, we don't. Well, here's, but here's what I'm getting at is, uh, cause we're gonna lose some revenue with SB one. Some of that's gonna be clawed, some's gonna be brought back into possibly other revenue streams. The, the downside of fees is obvious, you know, uh, it's a hindrance. But right now, I don't, we don't have to have that discussion.
Well, how many times a year is this even gonna be used?
Not many.
Yeah.
And the fee would be minimal.
Yeah, and really.
So, I don't think that even becomes a.
It's not gonna bring enough of them now.
I don't think that even becomes a discussion topic.
The, the only thing, the fee would only mainly cover, so like with, in, for instance, we've got three fiber optic companies wanting to utilize our, our easements. It's more of, hey, send me your, your plan, your grant, what you're wanting to do, how it forward to our engineering firm, make sure it's not gonna be in conflict with what we're currently, what we currently have or what we're doing in the future. Which one of them is going to be in conflict. Um, so then we can make suggestions on routing, what side of the easement, what on, things of that nature. But that fee would then cover our expense of having our engineering firm look at it, whatever their hour will be, right? It takes an hour, then they owe them an hour of, of redeeming.
Okay, I follow it. Well, uh, let's, let's reserve that till we get the ordinance put together, okay? Any, any, any problems with the, I mean, if you guys are like.
I, I make a motion, we'll go ahead and approve this permit process and we need a motion for that.
Yeah, if, I, let's just cover that off. I'll say, I'll second that. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Um, and Dale's on this issue?
On that, no.
Okay. Let's move on to town correspondence. We have something with the Youth Services Bureau. The Youth Services Bureau, uh, is thanking us for the generosity that they, uh, believe they, oh, here it is, I'll just read it. The Youth Services Bureau is committed to building brighter futures, one young life at a time. Every day, we walk along those, you, facing some. A wise heart challenges and every day we are reminded that the true change happens when the community of visionary step in with the compassion, belief and support. Today, we're reaching out to you not for a donation, but for a partnership, a partnership that empowers us to continually offering safe, safe spaces, mentorship, resources and hope to the youth that who would need it most. Your generosity has the power to open doors with its one-time gift or recurring contribution. Your support will go directly towards feeling impactful programs and meeting practical needs and giving them the tools that they have to rise. We believe that you care deeply about the future. We believe you're someone who sees the potential where others may not. Tom were asking, uh, where would you stand? I recall in the past, did we, I can't, I can't.
We did one twenty-five in twenty twenty-four. That was how much we done maybe last year. That's pretty standard, yeah. We haven't done more than that. It, I think we might have raised it slightly. Maybe we were doing a hundred and we did a hundred twenty-five in twenty five. I know for a fact, I did check on twenty twenty-four and it was one point five.
Two questions to you gentlemen. Uh, first, do we wanna give? And second, do we wanna just make that a static contribution that we do every year when they ask?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with donation.
Okay, uh, and are we able, do you guys wanna do a reoccurring or do you, uh?
Yeah, we'll do one, one by reoccurring each year if that's easier for them.
Yeah, I'm okay with that too. Okay, we'll do that. Let's move on then to the operations manager report.
You might not have in front of you, but we do have two pay apps. Um, okay, well, there are, there are vouchers. We have two pay apps, um, for the street project and water main project that will be assigned tonight, so.
That'll be part of my, your normal signing stuff.
Okay.
Um, the bridge lighting on the, with NDOT, we thought we had that straightened out. Uh, this little piece of paper in front of you, it's kind of black and white.
Okay.
Um, the original, we were committed to ninety-seven, a little over ninety-seven hundred bucks. Um, the bid amounts came back at almost seventeen thousand dollars. NDOT wanted us to, to cover the full sixteen nine, almost seventeen thousand. I asked them if there's something we can do here because it's a lot of money. We still have to buy lights. This is just the poles and the infrastructure within the bridge. It doesn't include the lights that Duke Energy's gonna take off. We're gonna have to buy to replace. So, I asked them, what, if we don't wanna do this, what, what's your plan for lighting? And they said, we'll just take it all off. There's just be no lighting. So, the, the only option was either there's no lighting on the bridge whatsoever, or we pay thirteen, thirteen three eighty to keep the lights on the bridge. So.
I think we gotta have the lights on the bridge with this. Many folks just walk across there, back and forth from the park. I think it'd be unsafe not to have the lights. Particularly with vehicles coming through there and they'll just slow down when they see people walking on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, I've seen that bridge with the lights out at night. It's dark.
Yeah. So, is there a way for them to put a directional light on each end of the bridge?
No, they won't.
They won't go?
They will not put any lighting. I asked them that, asked for standard lighting, and they said, no, we will not put anything on it.
So, Duke provides the town's lighting, correct?
Duke.
On the streets?
Will not put it on the bridge.
I'm not saying on the bridge, why can't they put it in the, beside the sidewalk, right before the bridge, with it facing the bridge, with it being directional? Because they do have those lights. I mean, I'm just, that's just a question. I don't, I don't get, I mean, they're lighting the rest of our streets, why won't they light the street right there?
NDOT doesn't want anything, going forward, they don't want anything on bridges. So, that's why if you see the bridge south of town, there's fiber optic now hanging off the two poles. They're making them take everything off the bridges, including electrical conduit, all that stuff. This bridge is getting redone. They were gonna take all of that stuff off, but it'd just be the lights. But because it's already there, we convinced them to grandfathered in. The stipulation was, uh, Duke was gonna abandon all of it. And it's gonna be our responsibility to keep it. We want the lights there. So, the original agreement was, we'll, we'll, we'll take it. You abandon the stuff, we'll take it and maintain it from here on out. But Duke was gonna take the lights off the top of the poles and we would have to put the fixtures on them. But the bid came back significantly higher to keep the lights. So, now here we are. We, we, we keep the lights or they take them off the bridge and there's no lights. And they, they are not gonna put the lights close to the bridge either. It's gotta be so far away from the structure.
Well, that sucks, man.
It does.
I agree with Blake though. Um, I, I mean, I, it's kind of weird that NDOT would go to no lights on all bridges, you know, uh, just for a safety concern, especially in rural areas where there's no light. I know somebody who, the first night he spent in Marco, got lost in Marco walking home. Uh, because, yeah, because I, I couldn't see where I was going and I'd never been here at night, so. It, this town gets dark, especially on a cloudy night, on a winter night, so.
What if you ever pass, how dark it is on the, overpass?
Yeah.
When you come into town.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Uh, the, the only comment that I'm gonna make is, is I don't wanna go through this again.
No, so the ninety-seven hundred dollar, this was before the, they wanted a commitment from us, you guys are gonna do it or not. If you're not, we're gonna make plans to take them off. So, they made plans, provisions to keep them on there. But this was pre-bid. So, their estimate, their engineer's estimate was the ninety-seven sixty-two. When the bids came back and they selected a contractor, the lowest bid was still the seventeen thousand to keep that.
I, I think I'm referring to the fact that it's our responsibility, but they're, they're changing the rules. So, I don't wanna go in ten years and they do something to, we spent all this money to the bridge and they go and say, nope, we're, you're removing it all. So, I guess the only thing that I'm, I would ask is that, hey, look, we're spending this money and you're not gonna change the rules on us. That it's gonna stay on there and it's gonna get replaced, goes the same way in the future.
And I can't speak for NDOT, but in our conversation, this is, because of the, the bridge was designed for these things when they initially built it. And from my understanding, the town council many years ago convinced them to put the lights on the bridge then. And that's why the bridge was designed the way it was. And it was some, there was some kind of agreement with Duke Energy. The town paid for the electricity, Duke provided the lighting. Well, now they've decided that any new bridge constructions and things like that are not gonna have that. This is not a full bridge reconstruction. This is just mainly walls on either end of it and redeck or resurface, some of the, the whole deck replacement. So, they're not changing the architectural structure of the bridge, which is how they're allowing us to keep the lights in it.
So, uh, do we, do we know exactly how long those lights have been on? Cause I, I was actually talking to Travis Holman about it, cause I remember when those lights were on. He, he talked as if this was before, I mean, sometime in the twentieth century, not, oh, well over twenty-five years ago.
Oh, yes. It was back in the nineties, late nineties.
Yeah, I, I first started working here. And, and I, Nick's got a, his, his intuition's great on this one because we don't wanna come back here in ten years, I think. But I think you, you look at the past and it's been over twenty-five years. It's probably been thirty, forty years since we did this and I haven't touched it then. I'm confident with that, but I, I, Nick, I, I get what you're saying. That's a, that's a, that's sound caution. But I, I think I'm still inclined to go with we can lights on that.
Uh, I mean, I think the lights is a hundred percent. I'm just saying, can we, can we petition them to say, hey, look, we're spending the money and we're gonna make this investment. Can you sign and say, in twenty-five years, we, we can still have the lights, we can still have this investment back, we're putting on the bridge?
Yeah.
I can ask, but I, I can't.
I, I can't see NDOT ever agreeing anything like that.
NDOT does what NDOT wants to do.
That's right, yeah.
In fact, having this conversation with them, they've been hounding us, like, when are you gonna pay for it? When are you gonna pay for it? I said, I gotta wait until the council meeting happens, I can't just do this.
Uh, it's under twenty-five thousand, so it does, not something that needs to go to a second reading or anything. I say go for it.
They did come, they did, well, they were willing to split the difference.
Well, that was a good thing.
So.
It's thirteen three eighty.
Sixteen thousand is thirteen, or seventeen thousand is thirteen, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go for it.
We're working on the wellhead protection plan, Title VI and ADA compliance stuff. I should have a draft done by November. Take a look at it for final adoption in December, so we're finished that up. Road asset management plan, I should have that finished and ready for some middle by December, after appeals, he looks at it. Um, our power washer that we've had for twenty-two years is, is wore out. The pump went out in it in the spring. We put a pump on it, now the motor is smoking like crazy. I think the rings are just shot. It's time, uh, to replace the same size, it's gonna be about a thousand bucks. Uh, water tower mixers. I'm gonna let Steve talk to you about water tower mixers.
Do they have copies of them or not?
They have copies of them.
Did you give them copies of it?
I don't know if you did.
No, I do, to you.
Oh, I don't know. All right, I'll just give you, I'll give you a brief summary. Each water tower has a mixer in it.
Here's two copies. I mean, they're, the word is the same, it's just different water towers.
I can make copies.
It's okay.
No, it's okay.
There, there.
Oh, I didn't have that.
The flipstone version is there's, there's a mixer in each tower. The mixer helps keep the chlorine mixed up, also helps keeps, it helps keep the water from freezing in the wintertime. Uh, it's kind of important that you have those. If we don't have them, then, uh, Moose has to set the towers in the wintertime to, to run, the pumps to run more often, to keep the water moving, uh, in the towers, so it's the freeze. For each mixer, it's almost twenty thousand dollars. Nineteen seven fifty times two, so you're thirty-nine thousand five hundred bucks for two mixers. That's just the mixer, that does not have some installation. Installation is another sixteen thousand dollars. So, you're looking at a little over fifty-five and change to replace these mixers. What were the mixers?
They're not real old, but it seems like every time we replace them, they go out.
They're probably.
I mean, they're fifteen.
Ten, fifteen years old.
Only fifteen years old.
They've been in since the second water tower had been put up.
That was twenty twelve.
That's when we put them in originally. But they constantly go out. This, the brand that we have in there now, so we're just not happy with them at all. So, we're looking to actually just replacing with the, with, they, it's supposed to be a better. Um, I talked to five different towns.
Okay, good.
That have this mixer and they're really, really happy with the mixture that we're looking at. And the guarantee on them is, the warranty is five years out of a three-year. The ones that we have now are just a three-year and it seems like as soon as that warranty's out, they go bad. So.
That's, yeah, it gets expensive when we're doing this in three years.
Yeah. I mean, the first time they went out, they did warranty them, uh, cause it was before three years. But since then, I mean, it seems like they may get right past the warranty and then they're done. And we even went as far as pulling them out every other year, washing them and cleaning them out whenever they give them tower inspections and it's still, they still don't last. So, this one is supposed to be a lot better. I'm warning you, everybody's about to talk to this.
So, what we'd like to do, at the very least, is purchase the mixers and see if we can get a better, better deal on installation. Um, sixteen grand for installation is a lot. However, yet for us to do it, I don't really feel like strapping it.
No, we don't have the safety.
Hundred plus thousand, or a hundred plus pound beam to my back and crawling up the top of the tower with it.
Yeah.
It'd be fun to watch it.
Well, I've done it, I've done it before with antennas, but I don't, I don't really wanna do it with a mixer. So.
I've been giving them guys, the young guys a hard time though. You guys are young enough, you guys can do this.
So, we're, uh, Moose is gonna talk to the, the company that does our inspections and see if maybe we can go ahead and buy the mixers. When they get ready to do the inspections, they gotta get up there anyway, if, if they would be willing to just install these while they're in turn, with the, obviously.
I like that idea.
They haven't responded yet, so, I mean, and I don't know, I mean, I'm sure there's gonna be an extra cost.
Sure.
And it may be.
Maybe six hundred grand.
To what this is, I don't know.
Yeah.
Never hurts to ask.
The other, the other concern is.
We're gonna try to figure out some, a better way. And we don't know if the, the warranty will be good if we have somebody else do it besides.
Well, that's the other concern is if we do it ourselves or someone else does it, it's not.
Definitely need to look into that.
Right.
That would stand.
Yeah.
So, I guess what we're asking is worst case.
Yeah.
The full amount and we're gonna do our best to try and get the warranty.
First feasible.
As long as it doesn't jeopardize the warranty.
The, uh, well, any other questions for Mike before we move on? We discussed this with the, the, uh, the ask though would be thirty-eight, right?
The ask would be.
Thirty-eight plus sixteen.
The full, so fifty-five, four, thirty-four.
Yeah. And that's over the threshold, um, for, I mean, so, I just think it's just one of those things where we have to, is that something where we have to do a second reading or?
No.
Um, I don't think so because it's actually like two different items plus install. Now, if it was like one item for, for one service for fifty-some thousand dollars, we might actually do something different, but I don't know.
But it's nineteen thousand each.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
I think that's just to say some votes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is I, it.
Your reading only applies to your imposing the fees.
Yeah.
On an ordinance.
Yeah, yeah. And that's what I was gonna say, is we got, we can do this by vote.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that we do the fifty-five, approve the fifty-five, and then if, if, if the installation comes back cheaper, that's great. But let's, let's approve for what we expect it to be and then move to there. So, that's my motion is we approve fifty-five.
I'll swing that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. While we're on water, Moose, with the drought that we've had being worse, have you checked the water table level? Is it dropping?
We're still, we're still good.
We're still good?
We've actually, that third well that we don't use anymore.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, not, and, uh.
DNR.
The DNR actually comes and checks that well also.
Okay.
And they are keeping records at the same time, so.
So, it's still about sixty-five foot or whatever?
We're still good. Yeah. We have a, our, our static hasn't dropped hardly at all. I mean, so.
I'm surprised.
Yes.
Man. Cause I heard we're twelve inches below what, it's gonna take twelve inches to bring us back to what a normal year would be.
Well, we're pretty fortunate. Our water table's pretty high and stable here. It doesn't really.
Well, yeah, I mean, supposedly we've got a pretty good underground river that's just north of town. So, that's, I mean, I guess that's one of the reasons why our offer state is so good.
Good to know. Good to know. I mean, I got personal reasons too, cause my well's the same water table. And I don't have any way to check mine, so I figure, well, if you know that it's good, then my well's still good too.
Now, so far, so good. I mean, if it keeps going, I mean, that's, I mean, it could drop tomorrow. I mean, who knows? You just, you just don't know. There's, there's no way to really predict that. I mean, alls we can do is just periodically check it with my probe and if it stays within a couple of feet, I don't worry about it.
Anything else on this? We'll go back to the operations manager report.
Yeah, water, the water main installation on Lee Street's completed. They're finishing up all of the stormwater structures. But once they get the stormwater structures, they can put in a section of sanitary main, uh, on Hoover Lane, just to get us under Lee Street. That way, when we get ready to do that project, you know, up here on Lee Street, then it's already done. So, we did have to put that, try and put that section as well. We're still on schedule to be done with all of Lee Street by the end of November. We most likely will not get Spark Street, any of Spark Street done anymore. It gets too cold in the asphalt. And our goal is we wanna do, we wanna leave anything open for much of it. Um, so, right now, I think we're still on, we're still on target to meet that goal. Um, it's been, um, when you're digging up some stuff from nineteen eighteen, you have very, very few records, you find stuff that you had no idea was there or was done and it's, it's been.
Did we ever figure out, well, where is that?
We wound up just installing another valve.
Okay.
To just, I tried to isolate. We couldn't figure, we spent two weeks.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So, we wound up having another valve installed to isolate that area and.
Okay.
What happened?
We had an area that we weren't able to shut down and we couldn't figure out where the water was coming from. We shut every valve that we could think of in that area. And we did have two valves, old valves, we're not holding very well, but it's, that still didn't account for the amount of water that we're still getting. It's possible, there's a connection somewhere.
Somebody connected to it and it's un, unwritten, unregistered, and they didn't know where it was at.
We have minimal records on that water. It was installed in nineteen eighteen, from what I gathered. Many years ago, there was a, a, a utility superintendent.
It would have been, whenever Rick first got hired in, old Mick Becker, he, uh, whenever he quit, he took a lot of records with him and destroyed some of them. So, there's, we do not have records for some of that stuff.
So, we're finding things we didn't know. But we're working through it, we're getting there, so. That's all I have. Unless you have questions.
So, plans are that Lee Street will be paved and completed in November sometime?
Yeah, the goal is to have all of the asphalt done, sidewalks, curbs, everything. And we're, we're still having a little bit of trouble relocating some utility poles, um, with Duke Energy and Frontier. So, worst case is we just leave those sections of sidewalk out until we get everything else forward and they get it moved and then we just pour back and we can do those. We can do concrete when it's cold out in the past, but we wanna at least get the, the asphalt ready.
Any other questions for Mike? Appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to town marshal report.
Um, I emailed my report to you early this morning, sorry, but didn't get to it, it's a bit busy. Um, I have a paper copy here if you would like to see it. Um, but that's it for the report. I do have a request. I would like to throw in council. Um, since we approved the budget, um, we did have budgeted for a fourth officer for next year. And if you guys are willing to let us move forward with that, to go ahead and start the process to find somebody, I would appreciate that. Cause we are staying busy.
That, that grant came?
No, it did not come through, but, but Stephanie, you did budget a hundred percent.
Budgeted according.
Okay.
As if we were going to hire someone else.
Okay. Okay, whether we got it or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we haven't, haven't heard back, or we didn't get, didn't receive?
We have not heard anything back, because the government shut down.
So it's still possible?
It's still possible, but Lord knows, he's the only one.
Yeah, I would, I would say we start, need to start looking for a position.
Yep.
Maybe it would give us a lot better coverage, seven days a week, and.
How green or position are we looking for?
How what?
Green or?
Uh, I'm praying that we get a lateral, somebody that's got some training already, but with, with everything it, the way it is right now, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's been a discussion going around a lot of communities, just the retention alone. So it's tough right now.
But I can, I can tell you, I've, I've talked to a few people, and our insurance is one of the big selling points for us.
I agree. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions for Tom Marshall? HQ report?
Uh, nothing from HQ.
Have they found a replacement for Mark?
I have missed the most recent meeting due to scheduling conflicts like crazy, but I, nothing, that's came across the table, so.
I believe they have like thirty out of.
Yeah, they have a committee for it, so I would imagine at some point we'll be through that committee.
Uh, kind of a related issue, I was talking with Commissioner Springer. He was asking how, um, things are going with us and Jessica, uh, best, the, uh, community. And I said, uh, she's, she's been cooperative, and that's how I phrased it. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, she communicates well, even though she's not obligated to. She does. She communicates with me, and there's something she passes on information to me. And she and I have had quite a bit of conversation about our development going on out here.
Right. That's, that's how my character, I stay as well as the sheriff. That's consistent, okay. Uh, Region Three A report, didn't, uh, there hasn't been really any movement on that, but one of the things I wanted to look into with Three A is to see if there, because there are certain communities that have grants that help homeowners with lower, moderate income improve, uh, do repairs. And I wanna look, see if Marco can tap into that as a resource. I mean, some of the homes that we have here could use some repairs. And I, they're, they're not monumental, but they could help with those homeowners too, so that would increase the values and, uh, increase some of their sanity too. Uh, moving on to limited public comments and questions. I have one thing. I talked to, uh, um, people last night about this, and, um, I've been talking about it for a little while, and I decided to do it. Uh, the Masters Pantry is having, currently right now, a food drive, and a canned food drive, and a donation drive. The Masters Pantry's come before us before. They, according to the information that was communicated to me, they feed ninety-six families a month, uh, in a box meals, five meals in each box. But if you look at the numbers of food insecurity in Wells and Huntington County, that's not meeting that goal. It's not because Masters Pantry doesn't want to, it's just they can only do what, when they can with the resources they have, so. That's why they're having this drive. And so the businesses in town are, are, are involved in pushing that out. And one of the things that I had talked to Jasmine and Pickle about, someday I'd like to come in and do like a guest bartender thing. All my money that I give tips and, uh, wages would go to whatever that charity is, well, that's what we're choosing. It's gonna be November eighth. Uh, I've already actually got tips coming my way. I haven't even served a drink yet. And by the way, I do have my bartender license. So, um, that's what happened November eighth. Uh, people can bring it, if they bring in a canned food item, or they add a dollar to the bill, or do both. They had, there's a drink discounts you'll give, and so I'll be working from four to eleven. And I'm not gonna make any foo-foo drinks. There's only gonna be six foo-foo drinks, so if you come in and wanna, want Matt to make you a Harvey Wallbanger, you're gonna have to go somewhere else. But that's that.
That's John's favorite drink? You say it was four to one?
How?
Four to one?
Four to eleven. So, uh, yeah, please, please get this out to.
What day?
November eighth. It's a Saturday. And, 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 I mean, if you can't make it, you can't make it, but, uh, and even, and I'm gonna talk to Jasmine tonight about offering, uh, non-alcohol. She does have some, but I, cause I have people I work with that don't drink, and they'll come in anyway just probably to make fun of me. Uh, I haven't bartended in twenty-four years, and the last time I did was when I was studying.
Are you gonna do the Tom Cruise? Was that Tom Cruise that was?
Yeah.
Cocktail was the name?
But they, they, they do that with, with rubber bottles, and so I'll do that, then I'll still probably break them.
He'll be the fanciest bartender in the pickle. I've never seen any of them do that. I've never done it.
So I, and I'm gonna send this, I'll send this to Jonathan. I'll send something to Jonathan, so he put it in. I try to, and the, the object is, or the goal is to raise over five hundred dollars. I'm already forty dollars the way there. I haven't even served anything, so I think it's, it's an accomplishable goal. Plus maybe, I don't know how many cans, but something like this. This is a good thing to support, so. That's that.
They are working on, they're getting closer to getting their five oh one C three status.
Awesome.
So I talked with Sherry a week ago, cause I had lunch with Ron Krenn last week, and Ron was wondering, what can we contribute to? So I talked to him about Masters Pantry and told him that, you know, we're kinda stuck. He goes, well, Michael, the CEO, has told Ben and him, I just want you guys to take cash out of your pockets and donate. Don't worry about the five oh one C three. He cares enough about Masters Pantry, so.
Good.
So, yeah, they're really willing to do some donation here to the town. They're, they're actually maybe turning a profit here, pretty soon. Their revenue has just gone through the roof lately, so. And they're getting ready to build another plant like this in Tennessee. So.
I'll have to run my wife's house, so maybe I'll go visit that plant.
He said the people in Tennessee aren't near as friendly as the people in Martin. No, he was serious. He goes, it's not even close, not even close.
Yeah. All right. I got something else I'll tell you about later, but we'll do that after the meeting. Anything, any other limited public comments or questions? We'll move on to old business, and I don't believe we have any. Let's go on to Court Treasury report.
I'm being, I don't know where to put it, and I guess, uh, when is our automotive insurance renewal?
For May, I think.
Do we want to start the process of trying to get you close for that, before that happens, or?
I would suggest that we put out an RFP.
That's a good idea. Cause the, the insurance rates have been fluctuating a bit.
We've had just some changes, and I think it would, every once in a while, it'd be a hirer to put it out there to some information we're getting competitive rate.
Yeah, that's, that's due diligence.
Yeah, we can start with that.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Court Treasury report.
All right. Um, I have lots of adjustments tonight, and also Nick has one of these adjustments, so I don't know if you guys wanna handle that.
I don't know. Uh, what did you do, Nick? Huh? Put the water spick it on?
I'm, uh, I'm gonna refrain from making an accusation.
Eli?
It might not be anybody that lives at my house.
Oh, really?
Uh, we have sixty-four vouchers in general, five, one hundred sixty-one thousand two hundred seven dollars and eighty-two cents, twenty in water, one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. That includes the ones Mike was talking about earlier with the, uh, Lee and Spark Street project. Um, eleven in wastewater, thirty-three thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents for ninety-five vouchers, three hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred six dollars and twenty-one cents. We have four adjustments. Um, everybody is eligible. No one has had one in the past twelve months. And as always, I'm sure that some of these, all of these people would really appreciate an adjustment, cause those are some high water bills.
A couple of things. The leak and meter, uh.
So that's on us.
Okay.
But they, they get billed for, so their bill reflected that leak, even though that wasn't something they are responsible for fixing. So we still adjust it, so that it's adjusted off that.
I follow.
Yeah.
So does that count against them for the once a year?
I don't think it would, no.
Yeah, definitely suggests it. Uh, so let's make, historically make that known. And because we have somebody on the council, uh, for the first three adjustments, I will, uh, make a motion that we approve those.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the first three? Here, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries. Guards, the last one?
Over three?
I'll make a motion that we cover.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, I second that. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Uh, motion to approve the vouchers and paid bills.
I'll second that.
Uh, second. All, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Upcoming events, trick or treating, six to eight P M. Anything else?
No, that was it. I was gonna include that, and that was it.
Thanks, everybody. We need to adjourn.
Moose, you need to ride home too? I've got one right there.
I'll say aye.